And sort of what our status was and what we've implemented thus far and what we're seeking to still implement. I will say, I think we did a little bit of that last year. So the previous board got a similar update. But I do think it's worked. You know, this group is new, they have energy and they're positive. So we thought that wouldn't be a particularly heavy lift, so we will do it.
And I think there's two reports, one for the high school and one for.
Yes, and Eva and I were discussing the new ones.
There's a third for the preschool, that's right, that's right.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
All right.
And then we're really interested in getting some more information about the programs that the district has been growing. But we understand that COVID really, you know, put a little wrinkle in the communications because the focus was last year on just getting these kids in front of teachers and educating everyone. So they're now safe to know more information of where we are at.
Yeah. And it was actually interesting. There was, with Ruth's departure, you know, it's sort of, we had framed Ruth's arrival around she was joining our district to help build these inclusion programs. And it was interesting, last night someone asked, with Ruth's departure, is the district still committed to inclusion? And I thought Deb Dixon spoke so unbelievably passionately. And she was informed, she was passionate, she was authentic, she was engaging. It was, it was just, I think it was a great affirmation for that group to have someone really, really, really committed and so blatantly authentically so. So that was great. Did, I thought, yeah, it was really good.
It really was, which was something about. Like, it's important to. And those programs that they can be successful, that they're devoted to the student achievement.
Yeah, it's clearly something important to her. So we've got the right lady in the right place for this moment, so.
I was just impressed with how much she has already, with how much information she had already on the district programming. It sounded like she met some of the providers, education provider service providers. So she has, in that short period of time, she has built, it's, you know, from a bystander, it sounds like she has built a lot of connections and she understands what Concord is offering. So she speaks from a point of knowledge.
Good. I'm not surprised about it.
Yeah. That's all right. Great. And so I'm done. Eva, do you want to go with your?
Yes, so Concord.
Eva, excuse me, move a little closer to the microphone. Thank you.
So Concord Calio, adult community education is just an update, is going to be meeting this Friday at 11:00. And also, they have a new program that they would like us to make the public aware of. They've been working on bringing this program all last year in Zou. So it's really, it's really exciting to see the fruits of their labor. The topic is reporting and spreading word about, oh, sorry. I need glasses, I apologize. I apologize. So the topic is reporting and building community through local media program. And it has to deal with changing economics of news organizations, including local news reporting, and how is it important to counterweight it to national news and mass social media, future models of local news. And how. How those news can really, local news can support building a community.
And if you go to the website, it's right on the.
It's right there.
Yep.
And we can share that as well.
It's two sessions, so.
It's two sessions. I already signed up.
Good. We're going to recommend you offer public comment again because apparently the audio wasn't working.
Sure.
No, but we're up and running fully now.
Okay. We can do that.
Are we finished with that?
Everything up till, like.
When you think the sound works?
Probably five minutes ago.
Okay. So I don't think we need, let's just go back. I don't think we need to redo the minutes.
I think we need to redo the announcement.
Yes, I will. Yes, I agree with that. Okay. So earlier I made an announcement. Ms. Fadma Mezdet informed the school committee on Monday morning that she was resigning immediately. And according to the Concord Charter, we will need to have a new special election to fill her seat because it's outside 100 days of our regular election. I am not sure of the details or timing on the special election, so stay tuned. And I'm sure the town will inform us via the clerk and town manager. The select board will need to call it officially the election, so we'll be hearing from them soon.
And so we will, a moment for public comment. Please, please raise your hand using the participants tab if you'd like to make a public comment. Or if you can't do the participant tab, please turn on your end to you and then we can welcome you to the floor virtually. Okay.
All right, it turns off soon.
Okay. Any hands raised? I'm not seeing any cameras turned on. And so I think that we can. So now we should be at the recognition.
So apparently I'm finding out we. So I'll bring them, we'll have them here next. Yeah, why don't we have them in person next time?
Yep. Okay. Do we have to officially do anything to strike the record? Nope, okay, nope. But then, oh, correspondence, where correspondence? Oh, no, we're still, sorry.
I'll go or you go, Tracy?
Tracy's. I'm going to go after, because she moved me to the bottom.
Okay. For Mr. Stanton can speak to this. His colleague Ian Rames has been involved too. The town audit committee, the. For town finance and regional finance. We heard this morning from Melanson and Heath, the audit region. Closed out the fiscal '20 audit, fiscal '21 audit is already underway. For the fiscal '20 audit, the headline is it was a clean audit. That's their euphemism for all the data they received proved out to be very sound, very good. No issues. In terms of work to be done, one previous. The year-end accounts payable and encumbrances have to be. Of how they land in our reporting at the end of the year. And for new accounting requirements imposed by the federal government, GASB 84. We'll get to work on adding revenues and expenditures to our general. Is that?
Great.
How'd that do?
You did great.
Okay.
So, yeah, one of the things that we received the management letter on, as Mr. Booth just said, is just the encumbrances and in the prior year versus the next fiscal year. So it's just an accounting thing, it's basically putting something in the other basket. And we were on that and we will, I think we, this is the FY '20 audit, so FY '21 that should not come up again. So. No credit for any of this, it's all the team. Rames, he's the best.
Okay.
Our thanks to the team in your office.
That concludes our chairs and liaisons reports.
It does.
Okay, correspondence. So we can have a couple of emails. Of high school students. And we'll be discussing all those protocols further and leading to that. And we have four at the Concord level of various, definitely one, thank you. Great. We are at our discussion date.
Could we hold on just for one second? You were, the appreciation. And so I think we can pause for five more seconds.
Sure.
We have thousands of kids back in our classrooms, all the individuals who have made that possible, thanks. This is a year when folks could have come back a bit worn out and that has not been the case. Thank you all.
And to all of our staff, including our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, who I know aren't used to having the load that they have this year. So this is a big adjustment and we really appreciate not having to call out the National Guard to get our students to school.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's really nice to have a local, town and district-owned bus system. So, and all of our workers, it's really, I think, been a wonderful start.
What I hear. And we appreciate everybody's flexibility as we adjust, modify, tweak, revisit, and keep pushing forward. Yep, so it's all, all to keep everybody safe and in the buildings as much as possible and in the happiest way. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us.
So, so I think everybody has had a good chance to take deep dives in the DESI protocols that are. Agenda and to look at them in relation to our district protocols. And I think that a good place to start is to talk about, well, I mean, I guess you probably want to cover this since it's more the test. Do you want to talk about the test?
We could start there. Lori, do you want to just hit us on test and stay or?
Sure.
That protocol in general?
Yep. So I'll start with, we've had 18 cases. So that's a piece of information, more at the high school as of late than other places. But that's what we find, is little clusters of outside of school things might breed that. So when we initially brought to you in August, a protocol would be, we had stayed with where we were initially last year, which was to look at quarantining the class if we had a case. We, we had a couple of cases in the classroom, no one missed any school because of how it fell over the holiday. We knew we weren't going to talk on what we would do next. It became very clear that that direction was in front of us without a lot of need to deliberate what would be next as the state continues to clarify with the superintendent, through the guidance, through their webinars, all these different sources. And feels daily, at this point we're hearing more, made it very clear that. School. So we are ready then to look at test and stay, which is what the state rolled. Protocols for this fall as a new option for districts to be able to have school-based close contacts, stay at school so long, let me qualify this a little bit, unvaccinated, school-based close contacts, be able to stay at school so long as they have. Just conducted in the nurse's office or wherever we decide to do it on a daily basis for five days. The. Period, but two of those days are going to be a vacation. The recommendation is they isolate. There is a caveat, if they have school-based events. Test them, they may be able to participate, I'm not going to say we've got that totally figured out yet. Vaccinated kids up at the older grade need to do this, so that protocol stays the same. You're notified, so you can monitor for symptoms, but otherwise you remain actively in school. So this will allow the younger kids who don't have the vaccinating vaccination opportunity or, you know, we have that aren't vaccinated, which gets smaller every day, to have a way for them to stay in school and avoid quarantine. So we've been meeting with the nurses, so they all understand what's coming next. We're ready to roll on this tomorrow. Next step would be to notify parents what's, what's going to be happening. I did, was looking at this in one of my emails last week. And we need to just give them more detail so they understand how it works and be able to. Thing, permission is the same portal as it is for all. So they'll have to go in there and do that if they didn't sign up for pool testing yet. But we, we're going to hold hands and make sure everyone's directed to where they need to be, so.
But it's not the same consent as last year.
No, so the consent to test of. Who's CIC health directly, so benefit in many ways. And it's also a challenge because we don't have as direct access. There's a middle, there's no, we were the middleman before and could see things. But otherwise it's the. I'll be. Sent out, we'll just give it to them again if they didn't sign up and we should be able to do this pretty quickly.
It will be better if they did sign up, it's up to them to get them to sign up to then be able to do that.
Right, so if we, if the nurse goes in and sees there isn't a permission granted yet for pooled, pooled testing. Fact is, this is very early. Make calls all the way around and be clear that we're going to use the antigen test for test and stay before we actually test anyone.
Yeah, so I'm confused because it's the same consent. Both the pool and for the test and stay, but you just said if they're not signed up for the pool testing, that you'll still give them an antigen?
If they're not signed up for the pool test, test and stay with them?
Yep.
The parent has to go into the same portal and then we.
So I just understood what you said.
So the pool testing is PCR tests, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for making me clarify because it's a lot to try to.
One, one permission, one consent covers you for. The different kinds of tests, depending on if it's the pooled or if it's the test and stay.
Correct.
And you don't get to participate in test and stay unless you give your consent.
Correct. We'll notify parents, we're not going to just, every time it happens, we will notify. We're not going to just do antigen test, parents don't know about, even if they've given us blanket consent.
And this is only for in-school.
Only school-based close contacts because the mindset is because of our mitigation factors in a controlled environment, the risk level is lower. Outside of school, close contacts still need to quarantine.
Okay. And so what's the, what's the run-up time, like from the time that someone clicks? How, what's the process before it actually becomes active in?
That's a good question. It's the nurses.
Just know what the lag time is, if you're not preemptively signed up?
Yep.
How much time will your child need to?
Mind that and make sure it's really. Because we don't want kids quarantined if we've got this option.
But the best thing is to have them go through and do it now.
Yeah.
K6.
Yeah.
And the high school, if they're not vaccinated, slim, small.
10% of today.
Yeah.
So we're at 90%.
Alexa? So my quick question. Stay, like asymptomatic pool testing, remains optional. True.
That is true. Chooses not to participate in test and stay and they are unvaccinated, they will have to quarantine. Seven days.
Or, or 10 without one?
We've gone to the seven days, you do have to test at day five to be considered. Back at the end of seven, so technically you're right, we haven't really framed it that way this year, but that is part of the quarantine.
There is an option to do no test at all, no test anywhere. And the required test.
There is, that is a protocol, in the past we have always asked for a test because we want. Of whether there was co. Is it that we haven't yet this year?
So we do still require a day five test to return to school on day.
So that is, that is DESI protocol.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then my next question is. I lost track of it. Oh, so we have asymptomatic pool testing, which is the group swab that is, and a PCR is conducted on that. Are we or are we not doing the second swab?
So the second swab is automatically being taken once we get started, we're waiting on startup materials and setup. Twice, everyone who participates, so the pool of 10 will get processed. They will hold the individual ones, if the pool is positive, they will automatically process those. If it's, if it's not, they will dispose of them.
Is the same, is a PCR processing or antigen testing?
It's a PCR test, but I'm going to add to the complication and say we will. While we're waiting for the PCR to come back so kids can stay in school. Unless they're positive.
And I assume our flow charts are going to.
Yeah, we're, yeah. Working on it. The states put out a few flow charts, which are very complex, so we're trying to grab from them and see if we want to.
I don't know if there's a way to do it that's not complex.
Yeah, there isn't.
And just to clarify for me, so in the second swab.
Yes.
Is used. Positive person in the pool and that person does. For 10 days.
Positive, you have a 10-day quarantine.
Period at the end, the remainder of your class that is negative continues to test, does. And stay.
Yep.
And stay for the remainder of their quarantine period.
If the positive student was in class, yes.
Yes, got it.
The close contacts.
Yes.
It's necessarily close contact, it may be.
Correct. Verifications.
Okay.
And I have one question about outside exposure, so if a student on a weekend at someplace, they cannot participate in test and stay.
No, correct.
So they will get the full quarantine at home?
Yes.
That needs to be.
They will have those B2 and B3 options, like test out day five or, but and you're figuring out about that.
Yeah, we haven't had anyone so far not want to do seven-day with a test at day five because they're back sooner, so.
Of course, but that's something to clarify.
Yeah.
Because that's one of the, that's one of the recommendations, so to know where we stand with that would be good. And in terms of the operations, we have total faith in the leadership in the buildings, the health department, everybody to figure out the ins and outs of the close contacts and the mechanisms for making this all happen.
Yep, a little clarification at the elementary school and, you know, we're going to approach this to get as few people tested as we can. It is different to come from the whole class being quarantined to, are we still going to test the whole class? I think the answer is we're going to look at each individual situation. I can see leaning towards the whole class with the youngest kids especially, who maybe aren't so stationary. But we're going to look at it individually and make good decisions based on our assurance of close contacts versus the whole class and be careful as we go.
Good. That's aligned with, with the.
Yeah.
With the protocols.
There's one portal.
Yes.
Is it one portal that is one permission or lead you to two permissions?
Yeah, it's a really.
It's one portal.
With both permissions in it. The questions that my colleagues have been circulating, like, does that mean you're automatically in both? Or do we have to continue to just disperse out who signed up for what, even though they gave permission in the portal? So we've got a little logistical work to figure out there.
I know that.
A frame got sent this way. Kat wants to know if he or she signs up for intestines.
That is exactly, that is exactly, we are coming for the testing kids.
Yes. All the districts trying to sort that out. And I expect there's going to need to be two running lists to some extent.
I think the default, until we know, has to be no, you haven't signed up for.
Right, but correct me if I'm wrong, and I unfortunately don't remember these off the top of my head. There are some districts. Stating as part of their protocol that in order to be granted, I don't want to call it the luxury, but, you know, I guess the luxury of being intestines stay, which does enable you up. Pool, they tie participation in the asymptomatic pool.
You're taking that, but.
You can, I know two districts that.
They formally do so.
Just consider, this, I'm like, you know, all of the things.
I know.
A good place to talk about protocols versus policies and to what extent are things, operations and to what extent are they? School committee, we have our MAC policy, which is very much from the school committee.
Right.
And we are very involved in conversations with the. Explicitly. With testing and a lot of the mechanics of operations rapidly change, right? You would not. See that was, we quarantined a class, right, for example, we would not be able to adopt. So quickly.
Right.
Right?
Right. About that, so.
Your life easier, therefore, parents' lives easier by, and I don't know how the portal works, by having. The default be you are joining test and symptomatic pool.
Yeah.
At that point, unless you explicitly pull out.
That's a great, great thought.
Be very. We don't own, like it used to be through Aspen, some ability to massage language and says, so in this case, there's nothing, whatever people enter, when they click the CIC thing, they customize it to give an alert or to send a little extra piece of information.
Nothing.
And it doesn't even connect back to Aspen or, so we don't have a way to automatically send out a message after somebody has signed up. No.
Yes, we're discussing that.
Yeah. And you also don't have the ability to opt out at any point. So that was an option last year that you could, when you chose to, you could opt out of. But there's no ability to do that either. I thought you. Out to.
The CIC.
There's a CIC, you know, that you can send.
There is. Wondering how timely.
Send it to this.
And so I think that's your way to opt out, is just tell us you're not going to participate, yeah. So we're working on all these questions. You know, we're meeting them all sorted out very quickly. Think by the end of the. Any trouble knowing we're going to, we are very hopeful next week, so. To have our backside. Unended.
And starting from conservative interpretation of consent and all of that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Because the paper form is very, not much to it.
No.
It just says I consent to testing, doesn't say what. It doesn't say, you can opt in or out.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm getting a number of. Go into the mic and number of. Texted me and emailed me.
Okay. Just a quick question, just reiterate incentive for the schoolers to participate. Now with this antigen, test and stay.
We're going to promote it and promote it and promote it. I am open to suggestions on encouraging the older kids, especially, as we're going to talk about in a minute, very.
Vaccinated population and.
So let's see that it's beneficial.
Backup test and stay. To move on to, basically. To move on to, to basically asymptomatic screening overall as a, as a topic of conversation. We'll start with the vaccinated percentage in high school.
Ninety percent in the high school I live today. I don't have a broken up grade, but that's a really great number. Eighty three percent. In grades seven and eight combined. So we're really moving along and feeling really good about the number of vaccinated kids that are in our schools.
That said, you said that most of the new cases have been high school.
The most recent ones over the last five days happened. And out of the 18 cases we've had, I'd have to put my chart up to.
Get all of exactly detailed, but nine of them have been breakthrough cases, either adults or kids.
So we're, that's some of what we're watching and some of those patterns, knowing the vaccine is a big, you know, guarantee that we have all wished it to be. It's not.
In the percentage of how many people are vaccinated, it's, it's very effective, you know? I keep having to remind myself of that because I'm seeing breakthrough cases and
can't lose track of the large aggregate numbers of vaccinated people who are not getting sick. So. So that's where we are.
And so as we get all these, these testing up and running, it's probably taking, it's worth taking a look at really what's the best use of our, of our testing resources?
Sure, sure. I met with the nurses last week. They're willing and ready to do whatever they need to do. We've got a little bit of support internally, some per diem nurses are available and we've signed support for the pooled testing. So we're slated to have four people in district if they're able to provide what they've offered. So we feel like we've got a bit more effective to have, which is great news. But it is all a lot of work. I will admit that.
So amongst ourselves, I think we should talk about where we think we should prioritize the, the testing, right? Resources, given that they're going to be and voluntary asymptomatic testing and screening. We have talked in the past about mandatory screening for, for high respir- what's the term, high respiratory connectivity. Participants in those. And I think it's worth probably revisiting that conversation right now. Right?
Yep.
And so just to kind of get a sense of where people, I mean, where, where we think we stand. Is that I think we should be implementing right now or is that a piece that maybe we take a parlay? All the rest of the testing program is, is up and running.
So, yeah. I would think that we should focus our energy on getting everybody's opting in and that's just not students, that's the most. I just think it's, it's a good idea to maintain health. There are cases of COVID. We just don't know how to the schools themselves and to the wider community and to our families. So I think we should focus on the optional testing, but I hope a lot of people.
I have, there are two things. It, it's hard, I think, for me to feel confident. The way we move forward until for me, sort of two questions are answered. One, I think when the district is opting to do, it would be helpful to define the objective. So to me, the objective of pool testing, right, would be to prevent spread of COVID. You know, we were really lucky. Last year we had only one instance in a whole year full of K 12 unvaccinated students and staff, where we only had one confirmed instance of school spread. I think that was a triumph. And I think to me, the objective of surveillance testing or asymptomatic pool testing would be to do just that. Prevent, you know, transmission in school. I think the other big question that I keeps percolating in my mind is DESI, in their recommendations, has said explicitly that they don't recommend vaccinated individuals to participate in pool testing. And while that's fine, what I, what is very absent from that recommendation is why. Right? And I, and I look back at like the start of the pandemic, for example, when you know, there were daily news conferences and Anthony Fauci was sitting there, oh, no one, no one needs masks. Masks are unnecessary to prevent the spread of COVID. Okay. And then later we learned, well, they actually are necessary to prevent the spread of COVID. We had a resource problem. So what I'm, I wonder, and I did try and call DESI, does have a hotline. I didn't get a live person, so I didn't get this answer today. I, I think it might be helpful to know why they're recommending that. If it's a resource problem, we don't have the testing to accommodate, you know, all the vaccinated individuals in all these K 12 schools across the state. That would be worth knowing. Or is it a medical reason that would be worth knowing? Is it a budgetary reason? We don't have, you know, it's one thing to not have the tests, another thing to not have the money. Because I do think wherever, wherever the district ends up, you know, it's nice to have all of the facts as we conduct policy. You know, I don't know if the answers to those questions would change our view. I really don't. They may not, but I don't know. I would, I would like the information. Good luck, Courtney, for Googling it. Been there, done that. I'm trying my best. I haven't found it yet. There hasn't been a justification that I can find. Maybe you're a whiz on Google and wait, I'm not, but anyway, that, those are just the two sort of outstanding things to me that make it challenging, I think, to move forward and I don't know, with any, with any what we do, with any which way we go, I do think that the policy or the protocol that was in place that came out of the administration was pretty sound. But it does contradict the guidance and how we, how do we consider that and justify that in, in our district? And I think that there are certainly alternatives that could also be very sound in their implementation, alternative protocols that could be considered. That's just sort of where my thinking is at present.
To your point, we've always said that we, at a very minimum, will align with DESI protocols. And I think that's actually like a mandate, of course, we will do. But we have, we have been a cautious, one of more cautious districts and with good results from that, right? But we, but we've always been very, very reasoned when we deviate from, from any of the, of the guidelines or any of the protocols or recommendations. And so I think it is, it's worth really deeply understanding what what the means of the ends are and make sure that they are both good and true and aligned. Tracy? And I think that, you know, I, I've kind of gone back and forth with this all weekend, but I do think that parents need the choice of, you know, consenting to testing. And I don't believe that we should be mandating it, you know, across just one particular group, but really careful about that. And really look at what the DESI guidelines are, start there. And then make our decisions based on it, especially in terms of extracurriculars. Because, you know, you look at, we can mandate it for athletics. Should we be mandating for after school singing, after school band, you know, all extracurriculars to have outside schools? That's, I think, what we really need to focus on when we're talking about this asymptomatic surveillance testing. What is the point of it? And is it, so the kids are allowed to participate? Or is it to get data? So that I think we need to look to a little bit more as to why we're doing that. And I think we have, we've struggled with that whole equity piece of it from the beginning. Right? Even our, our last meeting on the 31st, right? That was a point of our conversation that we didn't feel it was right to single out one particular type of activity, but we wanted to look at more this concept of, of high respiratory health.
Right.
Right? What is the risk factor? The risk factor is the common increased risk of transmission, right? But, but it still is. We're still not, I don't, I personally don't feel any pressure there on understanding what really is the best path forward.
Right. Well, I think there's the equity piece, which I think however, like when you talk about extracurriculars, like I had thought about this week quite a bit about is, you know, I do think they are a privilege rather than a right. You know, there, there is precedent where we require things over and above just you are a student in our school. Whether that a mandatory physical each year to participate in sports, whereas otherwise I think it's every three years. You know. Yeah. Athletes consent to a chem health policy. Otherwise they can't participate. So I think that there is precedent to say, you know, this is not a guarantee here and we may ask more of you. I don't think, I don't think that is necessarily a problem as long as it's potentially like applied equitably. You know, and whether equity means any and all extracurriculars from Model UN to basketball or equity means all high respiratory output activity. I don't know. And then I hit the other piece is whether we have, whether we, whether we, whether we compel testing for those two types of activities. And then which kind of participants in those activities do we compel? Is it all participants? Which may contradict DESI guidance that vaccinated individuals sort of should opt out? Or is it only unvaccinated individuals that participate in those activities? And again, I don't know. I'm not, I'm just saying, these are, I think, the questions that could be considered moving forward.
To your point, I was interested to hear if what other districts are doing in terms of vaccinated versus unvaccinated athletes? What other protocols they are putting in place. So to Alexa's point, there's discussion about vaccinated versus, versus unvaccinated athletes. I was interested to see what other districts are doing in terms of their own protocols, the way they approach their students, vaccinated, vaccinated versus unvaccinated, how they follow. How they get it, also gather data. And I just wanted to make one point that if this pandemic continuously changes. So this is, this is a great discussion, but I wonder when would be, is it going to be in the next two weeks, a month? Or do we even need some sort of term that we will be revisiting this? Because it seems that as we go week to week, some of us a different situation. There's more and more information and we, and this, this keeps evolving.
That is exactly what I just wanted to talk about for a second is that what I'm hearing is that we encourage all students to participate in asymptomatic screening. Right? We love everybody and, and faculty and staff. But we might encourage the athletic departments to pause the mandatory testing of athletes, right? For the time being. But there is this question of what happens if there is an instance of no transmission within a particular setting, right? And I think from our, the way our policy, our COVID policy reads, I believe that, that the decision to, to get, to pivot, right, to, to change or to adapt or to adopt some newer revised protocol is, is at the administration's discretion.
Yes. With, with all of.
In a necessary situation.
When it's not just.
Clear. Yes.
If there is, if all of a sudden we said, oh gosh, the locker rooms are
That's a great example. We had tried, we had started without the locker rooms, only to create a major congestion in the bathroom that was less safe. And we pivoted back to the locker room. So.
But if you saw, started seeing that that was a point of, of possible transmission, then that might you know, then you wouldn't want to wait for the next school committee meeting to to, to start, right? And I can see if it's seasonal, you think, I think. I think that seasonally these things can also change. And maybe DESI's guidance for the winter might be different because most sports are done inside and not outside. So, you know, to just really be aware of what the protocols are at DESI and how it can change seasonally. And then again, it's sort of that policy protocol, right? Right area. So we want to all collaborative and all the same age and at least appreciate the, the basis for decision making. But there are some things that are very explicitly in one bucket. Those better not.
Were we to be an outlier district in Massachusetts and expect that extracurriculars all for equity purposes? Or students who have participated in testing? That alone wouldn't discourage me, but finding when we are an outlier, we need to ask twice or three times, what does that mean? What I find interesting about extracurriculars is that the student to adult ratios are not the same as they are during school day. I believe part of our successful year was the fact that we were managing students and adults in buildings with very strict protocols. That is not the same for extracurriculars, notwithstanding the fact that some of them are outdoors. So all of this makes it even more complex. But again, I, as, as one member of this committee, as I think, I have a use of it very nicely. This is a, an event that is a unfolding event over months and now years. And we, we science this exact and we're trying to keep up with it. And I believe that we would, should we err, we should err on the side of precautions, even if it is in a position for people. I was bearing that in mind. Continuing this conversation, but I am curious, could anybody offer up to what degree? Would a insistence on extracurricular testing put us on the margins? You know, we're already, we're not following DESI advisors. Were we to do so? Anybody offer up?
I can offer what I know. So here's what we've learned that in the league, Cambridge reported to the athletic director, to our athletic director, that they would be mandating testing. So that's how we've gotten that report.
Athletics only to our knowledge.
Yes.
And all vaccinated and unvaccinated.
That is my understanding.
No, this is not rushing, but they will be. So it has not yet.
Yeah, we're not clear on the timeline. So that's within the DCL. I've been reaching out to a number of other districts locally. What I heard back from since yesterday, Lincoln K eight is mandating all extracurriculars. So that does, that does get the seventh and eighth graders to vaccinate. Carlisle, as you know, is voluntary. Lincoln Sudbury's gone voluntary unless they have a concern in a certain space, then they may ask a team to mandate if they got something worrisome going on upstairs. Weston is mandating all athletes test vaccinated or not. Wellesley's voluntary. Acton Box grows voluntary. Lexington, now let's talk about that virus. Lexington is mandating vaccinations for all extracurriculars with only medical and religious exemptions. And those few kids, because I'm doing this with the staff right now, it really is going to be a few. Those kids will have to test. So that, they are the only ones I've heard mandating any vaccines.
So mandated, but you can participate in your test?
No. Medical or religious exemption. Which is different than saying you can just opt to test.
I think Newton South mandates testing before unvaccinated athletes.
Correct. Yeah. The Lexington superintendent was pretty clear with me. It's not vaccinate or test. It was vaccinate. If you happen to qualify for that little window of religious or medical exemptions, then you must. If you happen to qualify for that little window of religious or medical exemptions, then you must.
That's good. I'm glad that clarification, because it wasn't clear from the way it was written on there, Lexington. So it's great.
And that's all extracurriculars, not just.
But they're not mandating testing of their vaccinated.
No, because they're instead mandated vaccine. So that's what I know. It may still trickle in to me, but I also got several, we're still trying to figure it out. So we're not uncommon that this discussion's happening.
Which is, you know, we're almost naturally at Lexington's policy, you know, I mean, obviously 10% is still what, 200 kids?
Yeah.
That are vaccinated, but I don't know.
Yeah.
According to the state, our numbers are higher than that, so I'll be interested.
Yeah, see if it keeps ticking up. I do know that there's a population of very passionate families not vaccinated. So just need to say that I've heard.
In order to move the conversation along, just my two cents, I, I don't have enough solid information to, in my opinion, to proceed with testing those special groups. And I'd like to get our testing underway and get more solid information and revisit this in two weeks. Particularly perhaps discussing testing unvaccinated. While unvaccinated students who want to participate in extracurriculars, that'd be a requirement, but again, tonight I don't have enough information to, uh, we don't have a policy and to urge you to do that, so. That's just my take on this. I think we need to get somewhat clear consensus as to what we're thinking. We have some different thoughts, but I think we have to sort of make it up or down.
I had a just very, very quick follow up question to the information that you were just disclosing. What is the role of a public health department in the town that is doing mandated vaccines? And offering testing to the students that qualify for those? Is there, is this the school mandating, or is that the, um, the town?
It's very clearly the schools. I expect the town health officials are very closely involved. But it's a school mandate for sure.
I think Amherst is the only town, is it Amherst? That had their board of health from a town perspective weigh in on band dating or adding the COVID vaccine to the list of required vaccines along with like M M R and all that stuff. They're the only one that I have heard to date for the board where the board of health has intervened.
Me too. I heard just like the teachers here and staff here getting vaccinated. I heard that consistently from my colleagues, but not the kids.
Yeah.
Amherst has a few college kids there, right?
So I think our consensus is that, again, that we encourage everybody to participate, but that at this time, we would recommend that uh, the idea to make the testing mandatory for athletes or any extracurriculars is on pause. Given a bit of, an option to, to ramp something, to dial up something, should you find that there's a situation that was necessitated. Of course.
Right, yes.
Uh, I, I mean, I would be comfortable giving, you know, like, we, again, we, we trust our building leaders, our health leaders, our administration to really balance very carefully that, that fine act between, you know, the, the, the health and safety and the enjoyment of being in the schools. Um, and we know that's not an easy lift, you know, but it is, and every day is different and presents new information and, and new challenges, new opportunities. Hopefully, we have some more vaccine opportunities.
Like me to offer to use my D E hotline to get you an answer on why they're not recommending vaccinating kids should get tested.
Yes, please.
We're on a first name basis.
I was clearly not.
She's lovely.
Okay.
So we'll master.
So, um, I think from, from my, from my end, I think those were the day jumped out conversations from the protocols. I think everywhere else we, we talked very extensively about testing. We've talked about the testing study and, and we've talked about updating the flow charts and making sure that it's very clear, very obvious how someone can get tested.
Clear as we can make it.
Whether they're in school or out of school. We do have a list of resources for testing out of school, like, yes.
Yes, it's on the webpage.
Right, um. Is there anything else that's sort of a carryover from our previous conversations that anyone feels was left unaddressed?
I don't think so. I would just say the D E flow charts are very, uh, they include everything pretty much. So we may not need to reinvent the wheel if we feel as though they actually are.
What we want them to do.
Yeah.
If Protocol C might be the only outlier, which is stay home for 10 days. Otherwise, I think we're pretty much.
The only thing I'll put on the radar, because I know you know this, but the state is unsure of its mask mandate as of October 1st, so I don't think that needs to be part of our discussion.
Yeah, I believe when D E came out about this, that they'd be releasing soon, so.
I was asked, uh, I was asked for informal survey data, different COVID things that have happened so far. So M A S S is providing that to the commissioner directly. So there's some sense of trying to know what's going on in the field as they go forward.
Right, while we keep our, we keep our eyes open, or?
The only thing I'll say to D E is, since we got our tests so late. Might have moved that goalpost a little bit, we'll see.
I assure you, I've heard our concern about the testing a lot. All right.
Okay, great. So thank you, everybody. That was a great conversation. And, um, I think we can we are, if no other questions or concerns or, no, no, okay, on to the finance committee requests.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so where to begin? So every year, for the new members that don't know, we get a request from the Concord Finance Committee to include a number of things such as previous year budget versus actuals, uh, projections for next year, um, and a number of, a number of, a number of things. So we did my first year, instead of responding in an email format, which is that what they've done in the past, we created a fall budget book. Um, in that fall budget book, we pretty much answered everything that they are asking of us and, and more. But this year, one of the new things that they are asking us for is five years' worth of projections. Uh, they don't want it line by line. They want it basically grouped by four or five big sections. So what I've done is I've worked with Kerry LaFleur, um, talked to Parrishaw, who is the chair of the guideline committee. And some of the buckets that we're talking about is, um, five years' worth of projections with salaries. Five years' worth of projections, um, special ed tuitions, which is sort of guessing in a way. Supplies, materials and equipment, that is another category, uh, contract services, uh, and then sort of an other. At the region, it's a little bit different, only because we have health insurance and O P E D. So instead of the five categories that we're doing at CPS, we're doing salaries, health insurance, supplies, materials, equipment, O P E D, contract services, special ed tuitions, you know. So what I'm doing is now that we have, I hate the word closed, but now that we're done with F Y twenty one for the time being, I'm able now to start. So what I'm doing is I'm literally taking the F Y twenty two salaries that are now, since we've had our first big payroll, I feel comfortable that that is my starting place. And I'm literally starting, uh, from scratch. Every person, whether they are a teacher, custodian, administrator, et cetera, I am rolling up five years. So I can come up with a, uh, what I feel would be a very accurate, uh, projection of what our five years look like. Uh, and then I'll have certain projection, uh, I'll have certain assumptions, you know, how many people are retiring each year? What I put in for potential COBUP for, uh, the years that contracts are up in these units. So my timeline is to have this done for you all and present it on October 12. October 21st, I'm going to be presenting it to the, uh, to the finance committee. So some other, so you're going to get the nice long presentation. And in that presentation, we include, uh, we'll include the budget timeline, uh, which I will be bringing to you all in, in two weeks. I went over that today, actually, with the administrators. Budget performance for F Y twenty one versus act, uh, versus actuals, that will be the 1,000 series and the 100 series. And then what we do at CPS is we give a budget performance per, uh, per each location, just so you can see how the locations performed. Uh, if there are any restructuring and reporting changes, which I don't think there are any, but that might be a section, we'll see. Again, the special ed tuitions, if there have been any education reform and mandates. Uh, we also do enrollment projections. We'll have a capital section. Uh, we'll have a transportation and the fleet update section, collective bargaining. Um, then the external funding, which is all of our grants revolving, um, et cetera. Um, and then we'll have a glossary. And then we also include the D E charter accounts as well as the N S D E enrollment report. So the only difference between the CPS and the, um, hi, and the high school is we will include an O P E D debt, um, in the health insurance in E and D, uh, section. So yeah, it's quite a bit of information. Um, finance committee did not want all of that. So they, they warned me, but we'll give you, we'll give you all of that. So we should have the budget book out, I'm hoping that Friday before the 12th. Uh, and then again, my presentations do that.
So Jared, if possible, I would like to see the spreadsheet for the Concord Public School teachers and the spreadsheet for Concord Carlisle projections up to 27 on the, the prior school committee meeting on the 28th. I'm saying that because I, if we see it on the 20, the 12th, we can't tweak it at all before you present to the finance committee. So we could see some preliminary data.
Sure.
So we don't sort of have to sit and just absorb and then can't, you know, we can't talk about it again.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, it will be all high level, but I can certainly, um.
So I, so I'm asking for a very, not high level, but a spreadsheet projecting, taking our higher dates. Putting it with the contract for the Concord Public School teachers, then the same thing for the high school teachers.
Sure.
With, you know, you could do various COBUP.
Yep.
I think the committee should see that, because that's, that's the bulk of our the cost that we can't really, uh, change right now. So outside of that, if you think of anything else that should get that kind of attention, that would be good for us to note on 24th.
Okay.
So you, you know, you don't put down the road to prepare a presentation for this, but it is our budget. And, you know, I think we need to really start to dig in and look at this information so that we as a committee are confident of what you've been presenting for us to the finance committee. That make sense? What do other people think? My?
I think it makes us more informed and, uh, more effective in front of the Fed Con. So if you can pull that off with your team.
Yeah.
And I know, I know as well, in a way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what we do, just so you know, we'll take every, so say I'm, that's just one, you roll everybody up each year. So it's quite a bit of work, but I, I, I promise I'll get through.
You did, I mean, you did a lot of it for us to what we're bargaining, so, you know, just in that format. We had to go through those scenarios as we bargained.
Other sections, I don't think is not, the other sections are more assumptions. This is real. This is true data. Uh, health insurance, it's, it's our best guess, based on, you know, budgeted. O P E D we have, we have until 2037. We know our capital, uh, we know our debt until 2037. So, yeah, the, the big pieces is definitely the salary piece.
Uh, just a quick question, Parrishaw. Are you planning on doing, um, a, 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 a part of that workshop? Sort of informational session also for the new members to sort of catch them up on, um, how the budget gets put together, so they understand those. I'm still learning, so I am signing myself up if you're doing that.
Yeah.
Usually you were with small groups. Lauren and I talked about that a little while. Instead of getting it to you all, sort of do a, like a, especially with the new members, giving you a tutorial, like how I do it. I, I love that, like a smaller group, so you know, that might be a better format than the workshop.
I need that.
Yeah.
And I just kind of point out that is, for example, it's Tracy Court and me and Alexa Cynthia and Eva.
There's no.
There's no four. Um, actually, four, six.
Oh, no. It's three, I'm just hoping.
Okay, so we're still, we're not a four. When we were seven members, when we were seven members, there were two Concord and one Carlisle, we were not a four.
Right.
Right?
I still believe that we adhere to the size of our committee and not the current composition.
Okay.
That's my understanding of how it works.
You said I'll check up, but, but then we only have to do two, right? Just to make it easy that it's only two groups. Perfect. Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
We have avoid superintendent goals.
Thank you. So I've drafted my goal areas for this year, and I'm going to stress the word draft. I do want your feedback tonight. A few things I had in mind. One is to not have COVID take over all of it. So there's a vision.
For the year. It's there, it's definitely there.
But it's, it's not feeding through everything the way I felt it was last year. Um, student learning focuses on two very, well, special ed and literacy and by design. And I'm going to go into a little more detail on these in a minute. Um, and then I, I just want to qualify that the third one looks like it's about student well-being, and I purposely put it under academics. Because especially this year, I, we feel very strongly that we must attend to the kids' mental and physical well-being in order for them to access the academics. So I purposely did that. And then the last set of, uh, district improvement goals, um.
Budget, not talk on what I want to focus on there besides just the normal processes.
D E I, which you're well aware of, and obviously the middle school. So um, just in terms of highlighting some of what's here. Um, I think to what Alexa was referencing, CPAC's area of want is they're already aligned, which is great news. Um, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to step back a little bit with an interim director. Um, look at what our areas of need are, sort of do that, you know, environmental scan of where, where we're at. Um, we do know, and Debbie and I have talked about this, there are consistent just special ed processes that she feels she can help us with this year. Um, consistency being among the top of those. Not that the I P process isn't very legislated and very consistent, but there's nuance that if we don't really, um, get a district-wide way of doing things, it will, it, it stays slightly different in each building. So we, we want to, want to be working on that. As you mentioned, the intensive, um, programming, looking at placement processes, the needs of those kids and the enrollments and um, all this, obviously, I'll be doing in partnership with Debbie, collaborating with CPAC and, you know, building that partnership and strengthening that. West Ed Reviews was on my list too. Um, I know them well, but I haven't read them in a while, so I think it's a great activity to go through and um, my instinct says we've made progress on a lot of it. Maybe we're not all the way to goal line, but progress. It'd be great to document that and then see what areas we haven't addressed yet. Um, and then not most importantly, but very importantly, would be the hiring process of a permanent director. Uh, anything on SPED or you can just stop me? Uh, in terms of literacy, uh, and this is really a K 12 goal. I did, it is a little more focused on elementary because of the um, real intense work we do in literacy with the younger, younger grades. But that doesn't mean I'm leaving the middle and high school out. Um, we'll be looking at the dyslexia guidelines in greater depth and acuity. Um, piloting new tools through Harvard, which is actually Nadine Gabb's lab, reviewing our screeners and I think the bigger stress here is targeting what we're doing as a result of the screeners. Um, regular ed and special ed data. Regular ed and special ed data needs to get reviewed. And again, more of that consistent process and cohesion across the district. And that is overlap special ed and regular ed. I always feel like I want to be clear about that. A lot of the dyslexia work is the screening part and identification and intervention. And that's regular education. Also, in terms of specifics, in terms of student wellbeing, we're resetting challenge success and we're excited about that work. We have survey data to bring to you shortly from the spring. Both middle and high school have re-upped its formal members and working on the PD and the teams they're going to build and just re-energizing that. Open Circle is actually gone out of business, so we need to. Yeah, that was a wow for all of us. So we need to find our way for SEL at the K five level. So materials are still available to us, so we have time, but we do need to work on that. Kristin's running, running a group to, to look at that. And I think, you know, just making sure we're messaging really, and I think we've done this pretty effectively as we've opened with the staff especially, that really relationships and connection, just like last year when they weren't all in front of you physically, are just as important and something we value and is a real long-term COVID takeaway and just really naming it this year. I don't feel like we need to spend too much time on the COVID protocols, but I'll stress, you know, the, the last in that first set is to develop the balance between the pandemic communication, other initiatives. Really making sure we're not, I'm not only communicating about COVID because that wasn't the plan for this year. I had thought I phased that out. And making sure with the central office team and that we just do a better job of sharing what we're doing as a district. The building principals do a lot. COVID's out there, but there's a, I feel like we've spotted a gap, so we're going to work on filling that.
Surely.
I don't want to speak to these in general because I, I'm very pleased that as a draft, it really seems to hit what should, should be your priorities. But I'm glad you said what you did about COVID because I do think here we are year two. The extent to which you can become less COVID manager
Yes.
in our eyes.
Yes.
I'm not sure how other people perceive you around the district.
Yeah.
But less COVID manager and more school leader because you, you, you can't do both at the same time, to the extent you have been. So I know on a national level, things got better when we started to hear more from Fauci and Francis and Walensky and so on. And you're surrounded by capable staff. I think they will respond to your, your, your efforts to bring them forward. So.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally agree.
Thank you. I think it's time.
Yep. And I assure you they're doing that work and we're going to continue to foster that. And trying to find this balance, like I said, the plan was not what it is right now. So reflecting on it as it laid out differently than we thought. The budget work, I just, I think the part I want to stress here is really, and this is work collaboratively with all of you and of course with Jared, but really making sure the budget reflects our needs in these initiatives and strategic objectives that are all aligned with the strategic plan. DEI, mental health, academics, sustainability is coming back. Jared and Kristen are going to co-lead that. And really making sure the budget is not just the finances, but it's also reflective of our, our goals and priorities. The DEI goal is laid out here, obviously that in conjunction with Andrew, him taking lead. All these collaborators are really the leads and I'm, I'm the partner. So I think you've seen his entry plan and he'll come soon to, to talk that through with you. I do still sit on the MASS DEI committee, which I enjoy very much. And just feel like I want to have a presence in all of the work that's going on around us, including your groups and the others and just stay very engaged. And then the middle school project, it's been actually exciting progress. Court and I have been together now for twelve and a half hours starting this morning. So it's been fun to see the building coming together and see a, a design. The part we're also really excited about, Kristin and Justin are going to be running PD with the staff on these things that are now going to be available to them, teaming interdisciplinary. And they're really jumpstarting that. I'm sure when Justin brings his school improvement plan, you'll see that. And so now we're talking teaching and learning in the new building, which is what also is very energizing or even more so. So those are the highlights. I'm certainly open to more feedback. I tried to align them with both the rubric for the evaluation system, the strategic plan. And I referenced that living COVID protocol document, just, and it's a live link. It'll, it'll change as we evolve.
I'm curious about Open Circle. We've been using it for some time. And I don't want you to misinterpret what I'm saying, just an open question. How is it that we haven't simply adopted this and made it our own by now such that their departure is a, is a non-event for us?
Right. It's a very fair question. We have, I would say. And yet, the way the program was always presented, and I think this is some of what we're reflecting on, was that in order to be considered an Open Circle teacher, you had to go to the training at Wellesley College. So that is no longer available. So, so that's kind of where we're left in this limbo of having to revisit it. We have lead counselors at every school that are the point people for Open Circle. And I would say overall, we're, we're an Open Circle, effective Open Circle district. That said, there's been a little feedback along the way of other programs that are out there that teachers have experienced with. It's a great opportunity to reflect on whether that's
Yep.
still the best option. It's a great option. I've been in two other Open Circle districts. My whole career has been an Open Circle environment. But there's a lot.
There's other options though.
Sure. So we're going to.
Is there a grade at which Open Circle phases out? Does it cap at grade five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
And I would think too, when you, when you asked the question, Court, I thought, yeah, that's, I get it. And I, to a large extent, agree with you. But then I think like social emotional health for kids is evolving kind of rapidly too, you know? The things that we talked about ten years ago in third grade might look really different today as especially like as we, as you sort of collapsed that, what we're doing in, in social emotional learning with even like the DEI initiatives and those kinds of things. So I imagine that even though like the foundational pieces of Open Circle really are static, you know, kindness, sharing, regulate, behavior regulation, all that. I imagine the nuances might.
Yeah, these have worked, these have worked their way down to kindergarten. So that they have one or are given
Right.
another device to, to use. So it, it, it's a wide variety of things. It's a huge challenge.
Right.
For regulation, et cetera. So, you know, I, I don't know. I haven't been in Open Circle in quite a few years.
What a beloved program. Wild.
Yes, it certainly is.
Weird.
Certainly is.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but you can continue to use Open Circle techniques, but you cannot do like train, like you know, the counselors can't be training teachers within the building.
Correct.
Still do Open Circle because it's so prescriptive and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all districts have a blessing to use their materials for, I believe it's, it's either two or three years. And give us time to transition. But try to see it as an opportunity.
Yeah, of course.
It wasn't a surprise.
Yeah.
Now it's an opportunity. You know, I think if, if one thing I hope you took away from that and maybe to Court's point, like I want to focus on the work that is about us moving forward. That sort of got. We did what we could within COVID and I'm, I think we're all pleased at what we were able to keep afloat, but that's what I really want to be, be working on and working with for the better environment of kids, the better academic environment, the potential of a new school. Think how exciting that is. The DEI work with Andrew now able to be lead there. So lots of opportunities here this year, I want to share. Supporting, maximizing and bringing really forward to everybody.
Yeah, I know that one, one of your strengths really is the communication with the community. And I know you embrace interactions and correspondence and, and you get a great sense of what's the pulse of the, the community. I do want to reiterate to the community that also please reach out to the school committee
Yep.
with, with any questions or concerns. We aim always to be responsive, very, you know, reflective and, and, and we're always in a dialogue. So
Yep.
I don't, I don't, you know, want to remind the community that
Absolutely.
we are another, another point of contact.
Absolutely.
I will offer our, our COVID discussion tonight was a case in point.
Yes. Yes.
And I do think it is a positive that the community does reach out to you in terms of COVID and things like that. And it might take a little retraining also of our parents that, you know, I mean, I, they've felt very comfortable with you over the past eighteen months, which is wonderful.
Yeah.
But, you know, there are some other things or words, you know, the district. So it'd be great to, you know, move that focus in other directions.
Yep, I couldn't agree. Good.
Any questions about the goals? I think these will be very helpful in, in our.
Nice and specific.
Yep, in, in, in our goals conversation to see where we align. And, you know, there may be further questions that, that get prompted through our own goals exploration, right?
Yes.
But, you know, it's, as you say, this is, this is a draft and ours is a draft and all of these are works in progress and ever evolving. It is
Correct.
it is work, right?
And our goal will be that you see complementary alignment. Not exact mirrors, obviously, but some, some synchronization across the school improvement plans as appropriate to whatever they're working on that, you know, has some connection here, but has their own, own goals as well. And then these, my goals have often been highly informative to what the principals are going to do for goals. And even the teachers in their evaluation plans, not again, cut and paste, but really a, just an effort to keep us all in the same same direction.
Good.
Yeah. We haven't been able to quite get there the last couple of years with all the other stuff going on, so I'm excited to watch it all align.
Thank you. I think we're on to Tracy with the BEI subcommittee report.
Okay, so we met last week to get our committee started and organized and I was nominated as the chair of the committee. So Sarah is also on the committee with me and Lori joined us for a meeting. We did have one community member. But our first order of business actually is we need to nominate another member because now that we lost Fatima, we will need one more member. So as I'm giving the report, think about if that's something that you'd like to do. We talked about taking a deeper look into our current policies and how our DE efforts are related to school committee policy and taking a look at our handbooks. We also talked about the role of the budget process and if there are additional resources needed, you know, we would hope that Andrew would come to our committee and ask us for that because that's certainly an area that we can be helpful in. We discussed that there's some past data that we can look at, but also more recent data of, you know, how DEI is going in our district. And we talked about different ways that we could interact with the community to work together. And we talked about potentially having like coffees, maybe Andrew would come to those and that might be a good opportunity to really connect with the community as it relates to DEI. And I know that he's gotten some good feedback from the community, but to work together really with Andrew to do that. And, you know, we, we definitely wanted to meet sooner than later to just, you know, keep the ball rolling. So I think we have to adjust our meeting time though. Our next meeting will be Thursday, September twenty third, but Lori, you had said one thirty might be better?
Yeah, we, just today, we were looking at doing a forum on middle school, possibly that day.
Would one thirty work for you? Okay, so I'll send another email. One thirty in this room and, and I just booked that with Erin.
Yep.
Okay. And then I'll send me Jen to Erin so she can post that. So it's an open meeting. So I guess I, my real first order would be to see if anybody on this committee would like to join the committee or if anyone would like to nominate someone for a committee. I think that's our process.
I think I heard we didn't have it on the agenda.
Yes, we can't do that now.
We could actually, we could add it to our workshop.
You could.
We could modify that agenda and so people have more time to think. The other thing is we do need another member of the policy subcommittee.
Yes.
So that's maybe something that we could sort of maybe link together in some way by having some crossover on that committee membership.
Okay.
So let's put those two votes at the beginning of the workshop. That shouldn't take more than
No.
a few minutes, I hope.
Yep.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I think our original makeup was supposed to be one Carlisle member and two Concord.
Correct.
So, you know, I, I, we also talked about, you know, there's potential to have a rotating member. But, you know, that's.
The open meeting law, I don't want people.
Yeah.
Never do that.
I know.
I don't know.
I don't know, would that be filed with any open meeting law?
Couldn't. I think we just have to keep track of our who's the member.
Who's the member and.
In the audience. If you have.
Oh, you're saying if somebody comes just to observe.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be fine. Observing is fine.
If we're meeting in person, we'll use you to keep that straight.
Yes.
Yes.
But we could have two standing members and a guest member, right?
On the policy committee, there were times when we would have a member simply sitting very distinctly away from the, the working committee members. So it was physically obvious
Yes.
what was going on as well and help people not to pipe up at the wrong time.
Right.
Good. So should I email Erin? Are you kind of?
Yes, yeah, I've got a note between the two of us. It'll definitely happen. Just because we had to turn around tomorrow.
It's going to be Thursday, September twenty third at one thirty. We will provide the Zoom link in addition to meeting in this room.
Right.
And it was yummy. It was great. Well, we actually had someone join us, which was wonderful. So.
Yes, we did.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Okay, all right, we will continue this conversation on Thursday.
Yeah.
Now we'll go back to Jared.
All right.
CHS capital plan.
So Russ Hughes is here. I don't know if you can show him on the screen. And Erin is going to share her screen so we can get at least the high school capital plan. So this high school capital plan is a draft. Want to just state that it's a draft. And basically what it was is the team met. We looked at all, we looked at the campus. We reviewed the memo again that you saw last May and have seen a few times since then. And made some suggestions. The building is still fairly young. We do not have any major capital needs for the building itself. This is just the campus area. So what we were recommending or looking at, starting in FY twenty three, if we want to go ahead with this amenities building is starting with the design. Without the design, we can't apply for the waiver. This is just an estimate as to what we, what we think it will cost. We think this is ballpark, but we'd have to go out and bid it out and rely on what bids came in. So that was FY twenty three. And the other thing that we, this isn't the first time you've seen this, something that we could use at the campus that would reduce outside contract services is a campus tractor trailer. We're estimating that about a hundred and twenty five thousand. For FY twenty four, we're just bringing back the repaving and lighting of the access road. Back in two thousand and eighteen, Gil estimated that at a little over one point two million. We did add about twenty five percent. That's what we estimated the cost to be in FY twenty four. This is also something that, you know, we could possibly break up into sections, especially the paving part. So this is just a, an estimate as well as a suggestion, but at some point we do need to address the access road and the paving. Then in FY twenty five, depending on the design, if that is approved, that's when we would potentially see the, the beginning of the amenities building. We did not estimate the price. We used the estimate that Gil had there, had in there for two thousand and eighteen at one point one million. I'm sure that's gone up considerably. That is with the waiver price. Uh, that is with the waiver price. Um, so if we don't get the waiver, that would be considerably more. Um, and then lastly for F Y twenty-six, uh, we estimate that the turf field will need to be replaced. Um, and we're estimating that right now about five hundred thousand. And then we didn't have any potential needs for twenty-seven, so we left that blank at the moment.
The campus tractor trailer, we, a new, a new purchase. We've never had it before. Do, do you have an idea of the approximate annual cost savings to outside landscaping?
Sure.
Plowing, plowing and all that?
Yeah, I, I don't know if Russ, you can hear me, but I, I'd be comfortable saying like thirty to forty thousand a year.
Yeah, that's a good, good number.
And no, no new staffing required.
No. And where would the vehicle be maintained? It would have to be at the high school. So where would maintenance be done, as I'm saying?
Oh, not located.
Where, I'm sorry, where would be maintained? Where would be maintained? Uh, at the high school, but not, obviously the mechanics at Knox Trail would, uh,
Okay.
Yes, sorry. So we're dipping into a little bit of our swirling. Sometimes people get confused about how it all works out with the region and the CPS. So. Not for tonight, but. Won't be a region purchase.
No, no, I get that, but the maintenance, maintenance and so forth. And it's not, it's, it's not that much money. I'm hoping with a new, a new vehicle. Yeah. It's not like we're buying a fleet of trucks.
Not buying a fleet, no.
Can I ask, what is how, what, what is the amenities building? Just in general.
Yeah, so you wanna?
No, go ahead.
Well, so, um, outside by the, by the football stands.
Yes.
Um, we, um,
Oh, is it toilets?
It's toilets.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know. Okay. Oh, I guess. Okay. Got it.
At one point there was talk of some snack shack-ish kind of thing in there too, but it's really about the lack of bathrooms and Memorial Field.
Forty-four. Yeah, so this is a first.
Yeah, I, now, I, now I know all the background. Got it.
So this is a, we don't need to decide this tonight.
No.
Sure.
No.
I have, yeah, I might send you some questions and
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of questions there actually, I think, is
Yeah.
I have another one, one last one. The turf field?
Yep.
Would we be using the exact same type of material that we have now? I know, I, I, that is it, I might be wrong here, but I've, I know that turf in general has kind of evolved. Um, would we be looking to do the same exact application or are there nuanced differences that could have, could be better?
Sure. I, I, I don't, I can say that we will be looking into everything and this would be a
Cool.
This is not This is not just
Yeah, yeah, cool.
Sure. So, uh, on amenities, in no particular order, uh, were we to move ahead with design? It obligates us to a certain degree to move ahead on construction because the design and the pricing becomes outdated. So we really, uh, don't exactly lock ourselves in, but we, we put some momentum behind that. Is there anything absent our own actions, any external factors that would trigger this being required of us? We've been putting it off for some time. What's, what's out there that could necessitate our attention to this?
Town could choose to say we're not in compliance.
So that's town.
I believe it's town. Yeah.
All right. So I will guardedly say I'm not too worried about that. Okay. Thank you. Uh, and the, uh, the access road and lighting, would I be overstating it to say this is a safety issue?
It, to the degree of which I think we probably want to qualify a little and not, you know, make it an emergency.
Right, right.
But certainly it's an ongoing safety issue of needs to be attended to. And, you know, it's been on the radar a long time. So.
And, uh, useful life of turf is typically ten. So this is the typical
Yeah.
Cycle.
Yeah.
And hers lasts on a little bit longer than ten, twelve.
Okay. And, uh, Sarah, Lori, will we, we have a chance to discuss this again so that we can perhaps weigh in on school committee sense of prioritization?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. So we don't need anything to
And maybe strategy too, because obviously some of those are big numbers that would have us at, you know, warrants in both communities. And, yeah, I think some fiscal strategies probably.
Yes.
Yeah.
It is not a long document. But it is complex. The more, it's an onion, right?
Yes.
And so, uh,
One that is very familiar.
Is our timetable, uh, probably an obvious question, obvious answer, uh, for discussion of this, uh, somewhat dictated by Concorde income.
Town meeting, warrants.
But also there
We brought you this because we're at a meeting with the town on a Concord, uh, capital plan because of the task force obligation. And it just made sense that we would parallel the delivery of both. But you have a lot of, you have more time on, you have a, than normal cycle.
Directed toward capital planning discussions. Does it direct, also get directed toward fit and com production requests?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Shorter
Yes.
Yeah. But it's still, it's, we can claim that it's, you know, the work in progress and not applying on that.
Right. Right.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, I have a question on the other possible needs and dare I say the word parking and, um, track. Has there been any movement from there to be private fundraising for the track? Or no? Has that kind of been dormant?
As far as I know, it's been dormant.
It's been dormant. Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's not still out there in terms of where, that, that was planned from what, three years ago?
Yeah.
That we might private, others might privately fundraise for a track where the landfill is. And that has just gone unattended to, um, but it was not considered as a public request, at least at any point that I recall.
And would the resurfacing have any impact on parking at the high school?
Impact in terms of adding?
Uh, or subtracting?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
So we'd end up in the same place that we are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
Any questions? No? Okay. I think that then we can move to our action item.
Yes.
Yes. A vote to approve the vaccine policy filed E C F A.
Let's see. Came about, we deal with communication between you and, uh, the different, uh, work groups.
We have M O As with all the unions prior to you mandating it, which is great news.
Thank you to them.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Moving ahead very expeditiously.
Yeah. And Jared, Jared and I split the load. Yeah.
Okay. So is there, would someone like to make a motion to vote to approve the vaccine policy?
So moved.
Districts.
Do I have to read it or can I just move it on?
No.
Great.
Second it. Involved.
All in favor? Oh, no, discussion, sorry.
Session.
Again, those many thanks to everybody who was part of the creation of this and
Because we're on air, perhaps just thirty seconds, Dr. Hunter?
On the vaccines?
What it encompasses.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, so as you can see, we've agreed with all of the unions and messaged to the non-union staff that we're expecting uh, full vaccination, which includes the two weeks post-second shot, um, October seventeenth. I know most staff are vaccinated. We're gathering all of those. So we'll be, you know, literally checking off exactly who's vaccinated and pursuing who isn't. But they're volunteering the very few that have, um, requested medical or, again, medical or religious exemptions. That's a process that there is available legally to, to folks. Um, and overall, it's been really well received and highly supported. And I think the adults feel strongly they want to participate in a safe environment for each other and for the kids. So it's gone really, really well. Great efforts of collaboration across all, across all fronts. So it won't be long before I bring you, you know, ninety-nine percent-ish numbers of vaccinated staff, which I suspect we're there. We're just still gathering the tallies.
So we have a clock on this.
Yes.
Everything gets, uh, ramped up tomorrow morning.
Um, I, at your suggestion, I messaged it as a draft two weeks ago and suggested, I thought you probably were going to approve it and, um, ramped it up two weeks ago.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's really great news.
Yeah.
Cause it is an important part of keeping people safe.
It is. Yeah.
People in buildings.
Correct.
All in favor to approve the vaccine policy filed E C F A A?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
So weird.
All right. With that, uh, we have approved.
Uh-oh, here they go.
This call, this policy.
Yes, yes.
Um, I think then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee.
Yeah, before you adjourn, just if anybody has questions between meetings or after meetings, because we all have the debrief in your head with tonight and tomorrow and the next day, always reach out. Cause it might help answer questions or whatever. You don't have to wait two weeks, is I guess my message before the region departs. So please reach out.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, yeah, so a motion to adjourn the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to leave the Concord School Committee in session.
So moved.
To do it properly.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I
Close. All right.
All right.
Who would have ever thought we got, you saw those roll call votes that now, they were so abnormal and now it's happened.
Oh.
I know.
I know.
Yeah, Concord gets to say.
All right. So I can move on to the Concord capital plan. Great. Erin, do you want to put that up or? Great. So the team got together and, and we had a draft that we sent to you on Friday and we changed it up a little bit. So I just started the elementary over the next five years. So we'd like to continue the carpet tile, uh, tile replacements, uh, in the elementary schools for the next three years. Um, the E R U for Willard, um, will need to be replaced by F Y twenty-six. We estimate that those will be, um, they're near their end of life. We are, we just did Alcott this summer. We voted for F Y twenty-one capital at Thoreau. So Thoreau is going to be done next summer. So, uh, all schools will be done by the end of F Y twenty-seven. Uh, in addition, we're going to have some roof repairs that we're going to have to start making. Um, so we're putting aside two hundred thousand dollars in F Y twenty-seven right now, uh, for some, some basic roof repairs. Uh, at the Alcott, big priority for next year, we'll be putting in a high efficiency condenser boiler and controls. This will save us money. Uh, I don't really have an estimate. I think probably fifteen to twenty percent. Um, so we're estimating this to be about three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, in addition, sidewalk repairs and parking lot repairs, and that's going to be sort of a theme at the later part of this, uh, capital plan. At the Thoreau, at Thoreau, um, also their boiler needs to be replaced. Uh, we're estimating about F Y twenty-five for this to happen. And again, uh, some parking lot repairs there as well. At Willard, uh, next year, uh, or F Y twenty-four, the E, the R T U, uh, exterior, uh, replacement. Um, it's damaged right now and worn. Um, and then replacing the Willard boiler in F Y twenty-seven. Uh, in addition, doing some walkway and parking lot repairs in F Y twenty-six. The P V D and the, um, Sandborne, fifty thousand for the next three years. We took the fifty thousand off in F Y twenty-six and twenty-seven. Last year's version of this did have no fifty thousand in F Y twenty-five, but obviously due to COVID and the timeline, we felt that we needed to put that in here for F Y twenty-five. So Knox, well, really the Ripley building, the Ripley building is going to be really the focus, um, in the next three years. Some things that need to be done, uh, is parking, repaving, uh, sidewalk repla, uh, replacements, not repairs. That one needs to be done. We expect that to be a two-year project in F Y twenty-three and F Y twenty-four. Um, one of the things that needs to happen here as well is the boiler replacement. We will need a design for this. Um, so we would thinking to start the design in F Y twenty-four. We try and time it with, um, the middle school to see if we can move one of the boilers from the, of the Sandborne, uh, to here, um, which would, which would save some money. Another thing that we were looking at and we've, uh, thrown it around for a few years now is having a canopy right outside the spot admin door for, uh, when people are out there waiting, uh, just a little, uh, little canopy, um, you know, if it's rain or, or snow. So that's, that's something that, uh, again, we've been talking about for a few years.
You mean like a real entry rate?
No, it's, it's, yeah, right. But it's not a requirement, like we're not
It's not a requirement.
That might need to go. So that's just And then Yeah. And then another big project that needs to happen here is, uh, replacement of flooring throughout Ripley. Some trip hazards, um, and just some, some things that definitely need to, need to happen here. Um, and then another, uh, thing that has been thrown around for a few years now is, uh, connecting to the sewer system. That would be something that we would have to partner with the town. Um, and we'd like to start that conversation relatively soon and we put that into the plan for F Y twenty-four. So overall, we did stick to the nine hundred thousand, uh, and then we dropped it to eight hundred thousand in F Y twenty-six and twenty-seven because hopefully we have a nice middle school.
Very good.
Jared brought up to me when we looked at this earlier, there is usage of this building by the town. So some of the, like the paving and all that, we are going to approach them to see if they want to cost share a little bit.
And I, to that point, if you could maybe at another meeting go through it exactly
Yeah.
What is here besides?
Yes, yes, yes.
That might be, I don't, I don't think anybody's could really tell you. I couldn't.
Yeah, it's confusing. Yeah.
Especially with Concord Children's Center moving out. I don't know what's, what's there now, or if anything's there now. All right. And because we are a shared building, obviously being our regional CPS, you know, we will have that, you know, potential Carlisle piece. Uh, because it's a central office for both Concord and Concord Carlisle.
What do you mean?
Um, so for the, for the, for Ripley, it's a, it's a shared.
So that should be on the regional capital plan, if that's the case. This means, we need guidance on this discussion, because
That's what I was thinking, but I
That's what we, we need guidance on this. So it's good you've got these early so we can
Cause that's a, the, the regional committee probably needs to have a discussion about that.
Yeah.
So he knocks trail and Ripley with both on the
Knox Trail.
No.
It's Concord.
It's a town of Concord. Building that is leased to us or what is the arrangement?
There is some cost share.
Yes.
No, but I mean, is it a
It's a town building.
Yes, yes. Everything over there is town.
Town.
Yeah.
Town built it, the town, not the school.
Right.
But are the buses shared?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. There's X plus of the region.
Yeah, right, right.
That should be
So would there be any share from the region on that or no?
On the cost of Knox Trail?
Yes. That's a very short answer to the long story. Yes, no, Tracy Bill. Call me tomorrow and I'll talk you through some of the history. All the right questions, though, Tracy.
What I'm hearing Jared and Cynthia say is, this is where we start and we do the appropriate prorating before we go much further, and start there and see what happens.
But simple math, just so you know, that it goes by enrollment, so it would be potentially like ten percent would be Carlisle share.
Share.
But that's not happening.
No, no, we wouldn't.
Something.
Yeah, no, we need to engage with all the.
Because this will definitely come up at CentCom.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is, yes, why we volunteered it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, so now we're on to Concord Middle School Building Committee update. How do we want to proceed with that?
I'm thinking you're going to hear from Alexa, Lori, and me, and then, uh, we'll work our way through any questions.
Good.
There's a lot of, uh, experts involved who aren't here right now, um, but we, we can do our best.
Good.
We are, big picture, uh, moving our way through the schematic design phase. This will bring us to a point where we have enough rough information, and I don't say that, uh, with, with any great concern. This is by design at the SD phase, enough, uh, information to then bring it to two estimating firms, so we get independent estimates and, uh, then learn, uh, how our earlier projections, uh, have either stood the test of time or not. So we're not going to get concerned about it yet, uh, but we are watchfully, uh, waiting for, for that phase. Uh, after schematic design, then it's, uh, the design development phase where the actual drawings get put together and, uh, pencils get a lot sharper after that, of course. The timeline, I believe, Alexa and Lori helped me out, is, uh, something like, uh, first week of October, we hope to, uh, be bringing this schematic design work, uh, to a conclusion, and then segue over to the DD phase, as, as we call it. In terms of the building itself, we can share slides tonight, uh, we can distribute slides, the slides are public. The most recent ones that have been examined have come from the Architects SMMA as recently as this morning. Lori and I were at a meeting with the Design Subcommittee, uh, I imagine Alexa, you were there as well. And we, uh, looked at the, uh, the exterior and interior finishes with no, uh, final conclusions as to color or this or that, but instead made big decisions, uh, such as on interior flooring, there would be no burnished concrete way out of our budget. That our flooring would look, look more traditional. We made decisions to support the architects to have on the interior a blend of some open ceiling and, such as this room, some, uh, ceiling tile creatively blended around the building, again, without great detail at this early stage. As to the exterior, this was, uh, recent meeting, earlier than today, and we, as a design Subcommittee, have recommended and will continue this week, Thursday, when we meet again with the Large Committee, we'll recommend a somewhat traditional brick, uh, exterior surface. Color to be determined, it'll be local brick, so, uh, we don't even know what will be available to us in, uh, twenty twenty-three for local brick colors, we have rough ideas, so we don't fuss with that now. Do we have a, uh, exterior stone base to it, uh, as a nice aesthetic, would be lovely in New England, we don't know. But we are beginning to come to these, uh, these general conclusions. Backing up still further, uh, we are at the, uh, overall footprint of something in the neighborhood of, helped me out, a hundred and forty-four thousand square feet. That has remained unchanged for some time. We have recently looked at the, uh, lovely bridge connector that would connect the public and administration half of the building with the team academic half of the building, with an eye toward whether that was, uh, going to be, uh, something that was, uh, within our, uh, our budget, and, uh, the conclusion was the cost, uh, and the risk involved with a bridge like that was not, uh, anywhere near the extent where we had to rethink it at this point in time, so that bridge remains. And that bridge, uh, has more recently become the main entrance also. I think a design that most people would consider attractive and just unusual enough to, uh, make the, the building, uh, rather, rather interesting to look at without being, uh, too elegant or too complex. So that's the little bit I can offer, so add embellish, correct, and add your pieces if you'd be so kind.
Sure. Would you go ahead a minute?
Well, I was going to give an update on what we're doing from a communications perspective.
Good.
Can't talk with it, reporting off the design perspective, that's your domain. So since I just joined this committee, I, I took a look back on what, um, what has been achieved to date, um, since sort of our re-engagement in the work as a committee back in December, I mean, sorry, January, which I, it's not a part of most of this, but I did think it was worthwhile to report out what this specific group has done, um, and then, and then I'll report out on what we planned to do moving forward. In the spring, as most of you guys know, there was a survey that was put out by the Design Subcommittee that had, I think it was about fifteen hundred individual responses. That was a nice way, um, to solicit feedback from the community. In addition to that, um, there have been two hundred and twenty, I think emails received to date, um, from the public. They've covered, oh my gosh, a real, real, true variety of issues. I would say, um, certainly that they were dominated by discussion about the gym and auditorium. I think we were all well-versed, all, everyone who slept in this meeting, um, about, you know, that, that was a big point of discussion in the spring. But they range from sustainability to technology, connectivity, timeline, aesthetic, the parking, the ed plan, community use ideas, I mean, they really did, these two hundred and twenty emails that have come in have really broken the dammit. Four community forums were conducted over the spring. There was a hiatus taken in the summer, which obviously makes sense. We, um, don't find that to be a particularly great time to get high levels of community engagement, so there were four, um, community forums in the second semester, I guess, if you want to call it. And then additionally, twenty listening sessions, which are less public, but nonetheless really important, were conducted in that same timeframe. Those are sessions where the community, uh, sorry, the committee engages with different groups. Sometimes those groups come to us suggesting, um, that they would like to solicit feedback and understand where we are, and sometimes we approach them. We are continuing that output, um, presently. Um, and then we also relaunched a community-facing website, um, which is cmsbuildingproject.org. That just aggregates the information in a little bit more of a friendly way than, than the town website, which just has so much information. I think the feedback had been, um, that it was sometimes hard to find, so this, um, sort of more direct end-user-friendly, um, website was created. I will admit, I did just join the committee. I don't think that, um, there, there are plenty of updates that, um, the committee is now looking to do to that website, things like revised timelines, revised schematics, I think. A, a lot of it does get updated automatically, but not everything. So that has sort of been what's completed to date. Um, and then forward-thinking, um, we have just launched three social media accounts, um, to provide sort of what I think is like a more casual engagement, um, with the community. What we're trying to do here in, with those social media accounts is really just another way to blast out information. We've done, we've, um, made reference to the website, trying to drive traffic there, trying to drive traffic to meetings. We get new followers every day. Um, it's not a particularly, you know, exciting account, but it is nonetheless, I think, something that could be useful, because we do find, um, that, you know, the traditional ways, like everything from like a phone tree or, um, you know, mailers just are becoming less effective, and this is a really, it's a, it's a, it's a light lift, something that can be easily done. We are planning on two more public forums before we, um, get to that potential October eighth date of a, um, of when we send the schematic design to estimation. We, did we nail down the, it's a long track of the emails, I think we're having one next.
Twenty-third, which is.
That, yeah, sorry, Tracy.
Twenty-third at noon, so I think we're in.
That, to me, is very not accessible.
Well, in fact, we've had several requests for daytime meetings, specifically from the League of Women Voters. People are finding, I think, most of what we've done in the past has been evening, so we do get diverse feedback on that.
So I think you need to have two then.
There's another one for the first week in October, Alexa?
So is this going to be, uh, community feedback that you can then take back to the committee and maybe make changes?
Absolutely.
So you might need to adjust the schedule, because it doesn't really seem like that's happening.
So the trick we were having with this, the scheduling, because of all the back-to-school nights and the time of year, we were struggling with evenings, we were trying to do it before.
I'm saying schedule setting this up to the estimator.
Oh.
I mean, if you try to incorporate community feedback, that would result in a change that might take a little while.
Yeah, depending on what it was, I guess.
Well, as a practical matter, uh, community feedback is not going to inform schematic design at this point.
Well, then what's the point of adding?
To, to, well, I think it does serve a purpose. I mean, it, because we're in the cycle we're in, where, uh, we have an obligation to, I think, tell the community what we are now.
So you're telling them what you're doing.
What we're saying here is what schematic design looks like. Now, does that mean somebody has to, uh, just passively accept it? No. But, uh, we're not at a point in time where it would be, uh, turned on its head. Instead, uh, any, any community sentiments, sentiments that were not supportive of the schematic design that's being sent to the estimators would then land in the design development where anything can happen. Nothing is set in concrete.
But to go to, but.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
These, then they need to go to town meeting and vote out for that.
No, because the school building committee is going to continue to work with the architects through design development.
No, 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 then special town meeting. They need either to proceed.
I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
But I also think too, that the, I think the encouraging news is, we've had four forums, we've gotten a tremendous amount of feedback through the survey, we've had very high engagement, I, I mean, I think two hundred and twenty emails about first topics aside. Um, I think we have really done a lot of good faith effort to engage the community. I mean, to, I mean, I'm sure we will get more engagement, but I think, I think we have had a lot of synthesis and analysis of community, um, feedback to date.
The forum you had was in June. So it was June, July, I mean, a lot of decisions in time has passed.
Sure, I mean, it's been two, well, it's really been July and August, and I, and again, I don't, we made a conscious choice, or I wasn't involved in it, I think a conscious choice was made not to, you know, there, there isn't a tremendous amount of feedback that could be gained in those months.
So one example personally for me is, I watched the sustainability meetings, and I watched the discussion about dehumidification versus air conditioning. I did not see any data that told us the difference in cost of those systems, it's just one is more costly, one is less. But I don't exactly understand, well, how much difference is the cost? I don't know. I mean, so how was that decision made without an understanding of the cost? And were there field visits made to schools that are using dehumidification versus air conditioning?
I think I, I, I worked in a building with the dehumidification, so I was probably the testimony that was saying what I felt. It was, but, so anyway, that was, that was part of that.
I'd like to address a couple of things.
Yeah.
One, air conditioning, because it came up, but then let's get back to, I think Cynthia's made your point, which I think is significant. As to air conditioning, my understanding as of today, because I looked into it today, is that yes, air conditioning is the, uh, is the approach. And further, uh, the sustainability group that's working on air handling, uh, is, I believe, I don't want to get out in front of my, them here, but I believe they're going to make a strong case for air conditioning, that once it's in, it has the capacity to handle some anticipated peaks in New England, the likes of which, uh, previous generations didn't even anticipate. With the idea that any money spent now, uh, to size it right, once it's in, the critical thing is then size it right, because, uh, we might have extreme, uh, weeks in the spring that would actually jeopardize, uh, uh, school function. So, uh, so, so this is, this, this is my way of sharing their thinking, but your more important point, I think, is, and you didn't say it in these words, we're working a very aggressive timeline, and we run the risk of getting out ahead of the community, and they don't want to play catch-up with us, so what I'm hearing you say is, what can we do to make these remaining forums fast and well, well, uh, attended?
Right, and my other point was, there's a school down the road that's just opened that has dehumidification and ran the school all summer, so let's go visit it and talk to the superintendent. Maybe she said, you know what, I want to put in air conditioning. But, you know, I just think it's worth a, a visit just to see, you know, how much cost savings was there, was it, you know, was it the right decision, you know? Maybe it wasn't, but I know they ran summer school at camp in, at Helder School with dehumidification.
So the, the Sustainability Committee is, is meeting again very soon. I don't know their date, but it was mentioned this morning that it's coming up very soon. It's not too late. By any means, to bring that request directly to them, I wouldn't even go through the committee, I'd go straight to the Subcommittee.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But, but I think that this is an operational thing, and I think Russ and Jared should investigate it, not our volunteers. That's what I'm saying, you know, like.
And, well, I think, you know, from my perspective in terms of air conditioning, I just, what I wouldn't want to happen is what happened with Alcott.
I know.
Which was, you know, no air conditioning, and then, you know, two thousand and four, classes were happening in the cafeteria and the auditorium, because kids couldn't be on the upper level, so, um, you know.
Orange share with that mold situation.
But I think the technology has come a long way for us to, to just assume this is the same as, how old is Alcott?
Two thousand and four.
Yeah. But I just, it's worth, I think a couple of schools have used it, and I just don't know, did they save a million or did they save ten million? I have no idea.
We can find out.
Yeah. I sent you neither, but some updates I think need to happen on the website, um, the more detailed timeline, the most recent space summary, and a more detailed report from Hill, recent Hill report, like the last one's in March or April or something like that.
Is that my, that's my domain, right? We manage that website.
Yeah, Erin does it, so you can work with her directly.
I believe our.
Not functioning right now, because I just tried to take a look at it. I don't know who's managing the website, cmsbuildingproject.org.
Oh, I'm on it.
Yeah, we're, I'm not on it.
Oftentimes, what happens is all the material is there, but it's attached to agendas and stuff, and it needs to get parsed out, so if you can help Erin spread it where it needs to go, that'd be great.
Great.
Yeah, help me understand the website, uh, if I may. We've got the new URL. We have a, uh, gateway through our own homepage at the district, and we have a gateway through the town. Do they all go now to the same new place?
Everything's linked together, so.
So we don't have to worry about tripping over ourselves.
Right, no.
Alright, as to a space summary, this is the, uh, the amount, the extent of the detail available to us now, where it lays out every. where it lays out every, every room that is known to us. Doesn't get down to bathroom, hallway, dimensions or ceiling heights yet, but all the functional rooms are laid out. And that is available to us updated as of July at this point. So we should be seeing changes in that shortly, but that July one is available.
I have one here on September second too.
Ah, even.
Yeah, eight thirty-one. So we just need to bring that to the fourth.
Good, thank you.
And this is going to roll into our next discussion. Has the town hired a new sustainability director yet?
We are waiting to hear when the interview, the last round of interviews are, so they're in process.
Because somebody, both on the professional side and the, somebodies need to really be looking for grants. So that's what, you know, they're going to be wanting to talk about on Monday.
Sure, among other ideas.
And then the situation with solar, because that's going to impact our cost projections in terms of the savings.
I know Dave Wood sent me an email of an update of some kind that I haven't had a chance to look at, so things are moving.
So, yeah, we just need to be prepared to talk about that.
Okay.
I guess we'll finish with the building committee update, or the building update. Is there?
You, you mentioned solar, so we'll simply remember here that at the present time, the roof should be structurally solar capable. And they're still thinking and talking about solar canopies and parking, but it's only at the, the think and talk stage at this point.
I can give a brief update if you want on the finance subcommittee, since I am the chair of that.
That sounds good.
We met on the twentieth of August. We were going to meet tomorrow, I believe, but because there's really no updates to the finances, we're going to hold off really for a little bit. But once construction starts and everything, this will be a biweekly meeting, if not more. Couple of things that we discussed, we reviewed the committee charge that was, that we developed in two thousand and nineteen. We, we did a little bit of, had a conversation on MSBA versus non-MSBA projects and sort of the differences. Ian Parks, the OPM, went over his, his dashboard that is on our website that he's going to present at every single one of these finance committee meetings. One of the things that attracted me to them when they were interviewing for this job was their dashboard. I have been only in MSBA projects, but the way that they keep track of their billing in their categories, construction, architect and engineering costs, administrative costs, FFNE contingency is, is what I'm used to. It's very clear and they have the subcategories underneath. So that's something, once we get into that phase, he will be presenting to us. Another idea that we discussed was change orders and allowing the finance committee to vote change orders under five thousand. Because many do happen under that amount, you don't want to take up too much time in the full committee meeting for that.
Now, in the high school project, our change orders went to the committee and to the school committee eventually. I think that's the way the MSBA thinks it's going to be done, or the select board, one or the other. You all have to make that determination.
Maybe select.
Maybe select, yeah, it could be select board.
Yeah.
It should, it should go to some elected body.
Probably select.
Yeah, so.
I'll have to look into that because I know that there have been.
They group them together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They get a sign off by Stephen, as a town manager, brings it to the select board.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Am I missing anything else?
No, thank you. Thank you for stepping up to chair of the group.
Yep. And I, I, I'll say this, and I said this to the committee and assured them, between John Harris, Ian Parks and myself, we will have, you know, in essence, three set of books and we will reconcile constantly to make sure that we are keeping track. And then if there's any questions throughout the project, we will make sure they're reconciled and answered right away.
Good. All right, let's see what else we're down to. So the next item would be discussion of the Monday's meeting with the select board. So I'll just read their sort of question. Alternate revenue sources, which may include such thing as solar panel revenue, which we've never discussed. I don't know if the building committee has. Grants, user fees, sale proceeds from town school assets and savings from operations. So you, you gave us a number on savings from operations. And I think then we need to draw out, assuming you know, that we've got full renewable capacity, you know, how much more would we save whether we had air conditioning or no conditioning or that we could, you know, sort of not have any cost on energy or low cost, depending on the time of the year, et cetera, et cetera. I know there's a lot of details. But they will ask about, you know, user fees that might offset operations.
Yeah.
I don't know how easy this predict.
Yeah, our, our experience is, they have not been substantial, so I think that's part of the.
I'm quite familiar with user fees, as you all know. I think looking at it as a significant offset against the operational costs is somewhat ambitious.
Yeah.
Are there any what else?
I think they can be targeted to offset things internally that would otherwise show up in a budget, but if FX is a case in point.
Yeah.
Some of our revolving accounts are cases in point. I think we would be disingenuous to let people believe that little school is a revenue generator because it takes our eye off the ball. We have one mission, which is open up that building at dawn every day, ready for kids and we get too distracted with external use that might be attractive to us. Suffering for it. So I, I would urge us to suggest to the select board that they be very cautious in their, in their hopes for a school, a school building designed as a school building for those school kids to serve a whole host of revenue generating needs. But there are some. The, we have to look at what the public spaces could do. Bring in a tenant every summer to run a theater arts. I'm not suggesting that in particular, just on a way of example. You can have a steady client in there who is unknown to you. Come in during otherwise off hours, then that starts to make sense.
More for profit.
It's a one off here and a one off there, drive our staff nuts. And we'll be literally cleaning up the mess.
Right.
So we have, we have to be cautious. I would hope, however, that we give the select board assurances that the duplication number, that number associated with, with two, two buildings is a number they can count on and we figure out a way to deliver.
Yeah.
So we can just say, look, we don't have all the details yet, but don't worry, we're going to have them, you're going to see them. Just move on from there.
Yeah.
I think that's critical to us.
Agreed. And then I don't really know what solar panel revenue means. Does somebody?
Well, typically, if you put solar in, I'm no expert here, there's plenty of experts on the committee. But what you do is you, you don't use it to generate power for your building, you feed it into the system.
So obviously in this, you would think in the summer, we would be sending with the data, sending more back.
You're selling it.
You're selling it back to like.
It's that, there's a back and then.
And, and who knows the numbers? They do. I don't, I can go straight to them and say, if you invest X, it has a capacity of such and such, what a given year might do to benefit you and have revenues come, come out.
These are all good selling points and they should have, you know, we should understand this better because we're moving along.
Yes.
I wonder if you might recognize a member of the community, Cynthia.
Oh. Yes. Can you just say your name and address? You'll have to come up and see, otherwise people at home can't hear you.
We're, we're a little bit out of order here, but we're welcome to, you're welcome to take a minute with us, please.
Got my microphone. Either way.
My name is Kathy Cuculo, two forty-three Katerina Heights, Concord. I just wanted to comment on solar revenue, which is something that I, I know quite a bit about. There, you can have the rooftop assessed, they will come out, they will look at the angles of the sun, they will project the revenue that can be generated. You can use the electricity to offset your, your electric expenses. Most homeowners here in town, you use the electricity first, goes back to the grid afterwards. And there's also not only what you put back on the credit, but there are credits that get generated and sold. So I, you know, I can tell you that I've been part of the town program. I'm, I'm also on the board of a company, full disclosure, that, that runs solar facilities. It, it would be an easy place to make some money.
Good. We like that. Thank you for your comment.
Certainly a lot of experts in this town, I guess.
Yes, I know there are. Good. I'm just trying to think, what else from the memo did we not cover? Oh, sale proceeds from town school assets outside of the one large asset.
I think that's the one I want to talk about.
I don't think we're really going to make much money from selling our desks and chairs.
No, no, you're correct.
We can't do anything with BBT other than turn it over to the town.
Right.
Not to be quoted, but a number I heard was seven million dollars. That was some time ago and I don't know if it's, that has any basis in fact.
And to my understanding, it does not include that field. That field is separate or could, I guess, but
Yeah.
that's open state. I don't think people will be too keen on using that nice field. Since. Any other comments about this? We will be posting Conference School Committee meeting, so everybody can show up and participate if they so desire on Monday. I'm not sure where exactly in the agenda this, oh no, it's only on the top of focus.
Yeah.
So six thirty then.
Cynthia, another community facing asset are the fields. These are managed off, off school hours by town. Is that a being of expectation?
Oh, the new field. Yes, the town manages this.
So again, we wouldn't be directly involved in discussions there. It's due cost and benefit to the financial.
But now that you mention the fields, another thing I'm not really clear on is can somebody just do an overlay of the new fields versus the old? So just plot the old field. Square footage and, so we, so see how different they might be in terms of their configuration.
We have the new ones, so we have to find the old ones.
Yeah.
Right. The intent is one for one, so hopefully.
I mean, that's wondering, wondering, because it's really nice how deep it goes right now.
Yeah, the intent is app duplication of what we have.
Because I'm just worried that we're going to be moving a bit closer to Old Marlboro. With balls flying over and I think we're able to move far enough back
Yeah.
that that doesn't happen.
You're, you're on the subject.
Because you, you're going to have people get lacrosse balls in there with us, which isn't necessarily a good thing. Let's, you know, we can put netting up and that kind of thing, but it's, it's a nice, big space anyways. All right. Anything else?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Oh, we want to see a vote. Thank you, Mr.
Oh, yeah, geez.
We have that, but in terms of, let's just stick with Monday night for one more moment.
Sure.
Do we need to do anything by way of organizing our readiness for this? We have Jared and Lori coming in with ideas through admin and we have ideas coming from the school committee. But I don't think we need to choreograph anything. We just.
We took a call from Stephen Crane today suggesting, he and I have a conversation, a more formal conversation later this week, just so we all were synced up on
Yeah.
what the meeting was going to be, but nobody's asking us to prepare.
But if you learn more, you'll.
Absolutely.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, if you could just update us after that conversation, so we have ideas, what we might have missed or.
What we're in.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Anything else on this? Okay, folks. Okay. And I printed out the whole list. But it was three. I was like, oh, oopsie. So I'll entertain a motion. One moment. Entertain a motion. The Congress School Committee votes to surplus books from the Thoreau Library as outlined in the letter from Julie Turner to Angel Charles.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Thank you for expediting it. They're a little short on storage space over there right now. That's a lot of waiting.
Yes.
They'll have to come over to my house. So yes, we appreciate the hard work to get the space cleared out so that we can accommodate our classroom shortage due unfortunate instance of fire at the Thoreau School. And, all right, are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the vote passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And now entertain a motion to adjourn the Tucker Public School Committee. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. And there we go, we're done.
Thanks.